This conference will now be recorded.
This is my monthly meeting on the library board of trustees for October 18, 2021. Meeting of the large group of library. First item on the agenda is go all. So we will proceed with that. Judy? Tom?
Present.
Maggie Bott?
Here.
Maggie? Ruby Arroba is not here. Manzahado is not here. Craig Cooper?
Here.
Joe Heinrich?
Here.
Malavika Shikant?
Here.
And I'm Steve Emming and I'm here also. I'd also like to introduce staff members we have present. Lexie Violi, Assistant Director. Jennifer Williams, HR Operations Director. Tracy Moore, Development Director. That's it. Okay. On with the agenda. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent. So will Steve? Thank you, Malavika. So check out. A second. Oh, Tom? Okay. We have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda in the third discussion. If you can hear me now, I'll call for the vote. Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
So. Joe?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion here. Next item on the. Next item on the agenda is public comments. The no one, continue on. Next item on the agenda is reports and communications. First item there is the friends. Maggie?
Um, so the friends did meet and they had formed to be able to take action on some items. One really, I think, a note that we want to recognize is that they voted to authorize payment of $400,000 of the funds that they raised for the main renovation to be spent in peace with the city to fulfill their obligations with that. So.
Maggie? Next item on the agenda is committee reports. The kind of mayor's finance. Tom?
Um, nothing unusual. Just start.
You? Personal, anything? Thank you. In the average case, yeah. Evaluation coming up on the agenda. Next, I move to review reports of that.
Oh, I want to share. We have a D I community, of course, but we also have a D I staff community for outreach. And we met last week in the library. And this is excellent. You know, it takes me back to the strategic planning that we had with her. And she talked about the pulse of the community. And I, you know, there's so many things that are happening, which we already had pulse, I would say, it looks like with the outreach. And things are actually happening, you know, going to happen. It's not just chit chat or talking. So we talked a lot about outreach with the. Hospital and filters and things like that. You'll soon hear about it shortly. So that was one, the concrete things happening. I also wanted to request if you could share, any one of you or all of you could share any kind of contacts that you have with any nonprofits that you work with. It would be absolutely wonderful because no one likes to go out and reach out to more people in the community and see how we can help. That was the second. And the third was, I had it on my calendar, trunk of treat, which Bianca from Fairmont said is happening sometime next week. I cannot make it, but I am sharing a treat with them. So I think it's next week, 28th.
28th.
28th. 25th? Oh, okay. I need to check.
When is that?
What is that?
There's going to be, there's going to be a number of friends.
Number of friends, yes, yes. And she said, if anybody wants to, I had asked her what would be, so of course, can't be, it's okay, no doubt. But the healthy treat was spread that suggestion is spread. So I'm going to take that. That's something.
Okay. Thank you, Malavika. Next item on your reports of communication.
Um, so just a few things other than what was in my report. So there's an ARQ, how the city has issued for architectural and engineering services for the Fairmont Community Center that's being funded with public dollars. So there was a meeting at Fairmont yesterday for any firms that were interested and wanted to attend or planning to submit responses to the ARQ number there. There are probably about five or six firms there. This was not a mandate or a meeting, so that doesn't really tell us how many might respond. We'll leave it closes in two or three weeks. But then there'll be an evaluation process. This is strictly on qualifications. So then, once that firm is selected, it will, there'll be negotiations involved in that. So because of how this is being funded, I don't believe that the board will need to approve that. Really project danger by the city of those city dollars. They're not dollars that were allocated to the library to extend. Um. And the firm, once, once there's a firm that's been selected, the first thing they'll be asked to do is provide conceptual design for an addition to the Fairmont branch for the community center or a standalone on the same campus. So and then it's a process to help the ministry.
So. Are you indicating how much?
I mean, that's, I think that's part of it in terms of cost. I mean, I was trying to think. It's. I mean, the cost estimate that we put in that I would ask for by was for 35,000 square feet. And the Parks Department really loved to have a gym, which adds square footage to that, right? So we'll have to see kind of where it's up. The estimate we provided was for 5,000 square feet, you know, with some wheelroom inflation area and all those kinds of things. But there is only that limited funding there unless the city has additional money. And then our other, the two ARQ staff members who started with us yesterday. So some social worker and the reporters. With this house, that's going to be exciting. And then, I don't know if you remember, but way long time ago, the friends authorized some funding for us to trial a borrow by mail program. And then we kind of got all that in place. And then it was summer and there wasn't much concern about COVID. So we thought we would kind of delay that until weather shock was kind of turning a little more wintry again. So come November 1st, we'll be starting that trial. So that will last for as long as the money holds out. Those funds are to cover the costs of the mailing and the mailers, right? So that. That will. So we'll see how that works out. Our messaging will be, you know, if you're, you know, really physically able to come to the library, we sure would encourage you to do that. If you can't, right? If, you know, if you can't get out, if transportation's a challenge, then we would, you know, be happy to provide this service to you. So we're hoping that people will self-select. Otherwise, what you end up doing is really kind of a qualification process. You have to apply, you have to, you know, verify this person if they can, you know, and it just gets really complicated. So we're hoping that people will, will self-select. And then, once the funding runs out, we'll need to do some evaluation in terms of success and impact on the community and how do we make it sustainable? Because it's kind of without cost, like you said, in terms of the postage and the others.
What is the budget?
3,000. 3,000? We're hoping that will get us through. And I think that's it. And that's the question, but you know?
Maybe, and all of us here, I just wanted to share, you shared back, like, social worker is already on staff now. So on the Iowa State Library project, I think it's chat list. So yeah, I wanted to know about it. And I asked a question about social workers in Iowa libraries. And we are the first library to have social, on staff, social worker. Des Moines Public Library has a table that they put out. I, I have it in my notes that two days within a week that they put out a table and they come over. It's like, you could call it a volunteering service. And so the response that I got, and then somebody from the state library who's working on such a, such a item, okay, social worker, got in touch with me, Nancy Medevan, introduced me to her, and got in touch with me. And the overall, I got to know through the library job, I mean, the first library to have a staff member.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of interest statewide in the impact that this has and how we manage it here and, and what we learn and all those kinds of things. So I'd be not surprised at all if we didn't receive reports from the library presentation next year or the year after, you know, as we have more experience with it. There is a lot of interest statewide.
I was going to go there, maybe, what if we do a presentation? I have a presentation, social workers in a public library. So, and, and they talked about a map, which I have it too, where we can put in, it's an interactive map where you can put in, like, you know, now that we have somebody on staff, you can put in showing that down for public has it. It's a map of all the libraries of within the United States in a public library that they have social workers. I said, oh, you can have a duck there now. Yeah, that was really nice to get to.
Okay. Thank you for extending your service. Appreciate that very much. Next item on the agenda, your reports of communications that. Very in this. How we doing today? So we'll keep on doing business. First item there is a motion to approve the special collections development. Policy. There are being a motion to. Thank you, Judy. First, a motion and second to approve the special collections, collections development. How? Very good. Here, if you can hear me now. Call for the vote. Tom?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Maggie? Craig?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
My own vote is yes. Motion there. Next item on the new business is. Motion to approve the library fiscal 2023 to 2028 capital improvement program request. This is one of those items that timelines don't match up for. It's submitted to. Any? Any meetings?
They actually didn't submit this yet. I checked, oh, the C I P manager and said, is it okay if we submit at before meeting? He said, absolutely.
A bad motion to approve the library fiscal 2023 to 2028 capital improvement program. So move. Thank you, Tom. For a second?
Same. A second, Steve.
A motion, a second, is there any discussion?
I do have one question. On fiscal year 24, enhance self-service for library users. Is that equipment or?
Yes. So that would be kind of an upgrade to our, our self-check equipment, where we can have some one-stop shop opportunities or P S where somebody can, they can pay their fine, they can pay for printing, they can kind of do all these things in one location. So more of those kinds of things. So that one's kind of been working its way up in the system for a number of years. And then, so the, the things that are new, so a lot of these, you've seen previous years and they're just moved forward a year in the process. Fiscal 26, the geothermal system maintenance at the Eastern Avenue branch that would pay for, well, maybe if the glycol in the system, in the full system needs to be replaced and for one heat pump. That's really a rough estimate, as we learned from the company that does maintenance there, that the, right now, the, you know, at some point in time, glycol was $6 a gallon, now it's $20 a gallon. And the system is about 2,500 gallons. So, so, I mean, that, that one's a little bit like, just a kind of broad guess on that for that maintenance. And then out in fiscal 28, the carpet replacement for the second floor of Main, which wasn't replaced when we did the renovation, which is reasonably new, but in this one, we'll be kind of getting towards the end of its life, as well as the special collections carpet, which has been there since about 2000. So that's been a nice period of time. And then basin re-repair and maintenance at the Eastern Avenue branch, as we learned our experience with Fairmont, was that the caulking in the expansion joints doesn't last forever and that sometimes you find that stone deterioration as well as the caulking around the windows. So we, we had that work done in Fairmont this summer because it was no longer waterproof and we were potentially going to get water behind the stone. It would bring other, other damage. So, so we wanted to make sure that that was funded out, since we know that that's potentially for those with either changes. And then, in the ongoing projects, so as you know, the, the materials budget that's funded from equipment bonds, we asked for an increase in fiscal 23 and 24 specifically to identify those gaps that Lexi told you about in terms of the diversity of the collection, so that we can do some of that needed buying without impacting our ability to get 10 copies of Liz News' pattern book or whatever, best seller to meet those other needs, right? Because if that budget stays the same, then in order to increase the diversity of the collection by different authors entitled, we would almost inevitably be buying fewer of those other high-end things, right? So we're hoping that they will fund that increase. And then, for the equipment budget, same thing, that's funded with equipment bonds. And we increased that in the out-years because of the software change with Windows 11. Our IT supervisor has indicated that we're going to have to replace computers more quickly than what we had anticipated in order to be compatible with. Once one of those tenants is deported, it becomes a security issue for us to keep running with our systems and windows. Joe, did you have a question?
Yeah, you had on 25, 26 Fairmont roof replacement. Is that the entire roof?
Yes.
Okay. And is that because of the auto warranty or?
It's already actually about warranty this year, I think.
Last year.
Last year, yeah.
Was the work that was done just to patch them so that it was worth it last month?
Um, yeah. Yeah, we probably had a leak.
Yeah, we get, we have maybe a couple, three leaks every year there.
Who's the engineer on the facilities? Who's in charge here? Maintenance on the facilities?
Um, so Larry Keller is the, the head of maintenance that we deal with through the city. But in terms of like the engineering work that would be done with that, we would, the city would likely encourage us to contract that out. So, so that's why there's $19,000 for engineering in the fiscal year prior. And then, and that gives us the opportunity to get a much more accurate estimate that we would have to submit as part of the request for fiscal 26. So for the, for the upcoming year, when we submit like for the, the main exterior painting, as we submitted that since it's going to be funded next year, we hope we had to submit an estimate from a contractor so that they're reasonably certain that if one of projects funded, that there's enough funding to.
And off the top of your head, you know how long the roof is covered for year and pre-ester?
This roof is fairly new. This one was done when Ken and Wayne was here, so seven, eight years ago, something like that. That's, that's not right.
That's important, I think.
And eastern.
When it was built.
When it was built, right. Yeah, so eastern roof replacement is out in fiscal 27, 6 and 27.
Other questions? Not. Call for the vote. Motion to approve the library fiscal 2023 to 2028 capital improvement program request.
So move.
Open the vote.
All the votes.
Okay. Okay. Open the vote. Maggie?
Yes.
Craig? Joe?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion there. Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the library fiscal year 2023 operating budget request.
So move.
Okay. Next item, I will put a second. Thank you, Tom. Okay. So a motion and a second to approve the library fiscal year 2023 operating budget request. Very good session.
I liked the fact that you identified whether you kept, like, for example, saving entry service, you know, was everything worked. That, that's helpful to see that.
That's all Casey's doing.
Thank you, Casey. Yes, also, she probably noticed that maybe the items are the same, like, most of the items are even some a little less, some a bit less, actually, even some a little bit more. But the question I got is, just recently heard, I'm sure the gas prices are expecting to be quite a bit higher next year.
Uh huh. Yeah, so, so this year, we are operating on the 145,000 number that's there, right, Casey?
Yep.
So, so then, then, so that reduction is really maybe from the previous year, but it just kept made its way through the system and fit. So that's what we have for this year. And the reason that was dropped was because we were always so overfunded in that line. There was always a lot of money left over. So the city was trying to right-size that, like, justifiably. But they didn't drop it down to an amount that's even equal to what we have, an average of what we have in spending, there was still some given. Now, whether or not it's enough to cover the increases, I don't, I don't know. But, I mean, I think that that's a citywide problem that they're going to have to solve if it comes that way, because all city facilities are going to need to maintain each of this, right? Like a hand on the dog. So they're going to have to, you know, that's why the city has reserves.
Thanks, everyone. So last year, we had almost $182,000 budget, but it always stuck on. So it's more than last year.
Yeah.
Some person I heard talk about this and wake up.
It's kind of scary.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Okay. Open the votes. Craig? Joe?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion there. Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve closing the library on Thursday, April 28, 2022, for an all-staff training day. I move, Steve. Thank you, Malavika. For a second.
I'll second.
Okay, Tom. A motion, a second, to approve closing the library on Thursday, April 28, 2022, for an all-staff training day. Very good session. Joe? Malavika?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Yes. And my own vote is yes. Open here. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the library director's performance review. And before we go into that, I just wanted to say that on the note, there was no closed session. Explain that. All the, it started the evaluation survey, all trustees responded to that. And the results of the evaluation were extremely positive. And so it seemed very unlikely to be that we would be rendered into a situation or have a closed session, which the reason for which would be to prevent needless and irreparable injury to individual, to be valuable for reputation. And so didn't see that coming at all. And to, I guess, the, it's obviously a high front, wanting to avoid the, the whole the, the. Which, normally, if we're going to have closed session, when we have a virtual meeting, we would have to go into closed session, which we would have to end that meeting there. We can't go into closed session in a virtual meeting and then come back and vote. We would have to approve the evaluation in an open session, which would mean we couldn't do that until next June anyway. And plus, that it's all thing with recording and keeping them recording. And then also, man, we have to be aware that including, tucked in with that recording has to be detailed minutes of meeting, which. Hey, so I decided not to have the closed session. And we're just saying, just in case, if anyone feels that, you know, there should be a closed session for any of these. Please, if you can, okay, all this is a little. Maggie? Okay. So. Okay, so, um, this item again is motion to approve the library director's performance review. They have a motion that I approve.
I second.
Thank you, Albea. Okay, very discussion. Thank you very much for, for your fantastic efforts to do for us and the community. A difficult period, yes, a very difficult period.
Yes.
So, uh, the discussion? Did you have anything you wanted to say, Bob? Any response? You don't have to, but I just.
I really appreciate the board's support and we made a good public. Everybody's always been really supportive of the decisions that, you know, collectively as an organization, helping the staff and our people's safety. We appreciate the support because I know that there are certainly other libraries in Iowa that have not got.
Okay. There's no further discussion, all through the vote. Albea?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Um.
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Great, yes. Joe?
Yes.
My own vote is yes, motion here. Okay, last item on the agenda is the motion to approve the library meeting room use policy. Also discussed second.
Um, no, we didn't.
Oh, I thought I remember somewhere there was a discussion about the five oh one C three.
I think when we talked.
Oh, okay. Okay, sorry. Is that the thing pretty different from the policy?
That's the only difference in the policy is, um, I wanted to provide some clarity for that because we have so many procedures you use and book the meeting rooms. There are homeschool groups, there are, you know, mom's playgroups and there are quiltery groups and, um, all, all different kinds of folks that, that are not an official five oh one C three. Um, so I just wanted to provide some clarity for that for none, what a nonprofit organization.
They're taking a motion to approve the library meeting room use policy. So move. Tom? Second. Great. The motion is second to approve the library meeting room use policy. Question. Open the votes. Judy?
Yes.
Um, yes. Maggie?
Yes.
That was a thing that was like.
Joe?
Yes.
Albea, yes. And my own vote is yes. Next item on the agenda is in the discussion. We have the information on Applewood's, uh, bill receipts. From the three. Some wish. Now all of these. Anyway, I'm trying to, I think maybe there's only one that didn't qualify. But, uh, anyway, so that was sent out to you, um, these others. The state committee plus a man that will meet next week. I very know. As you've seen their information here in the discuss. Have you been down to smaller number? And, uh, but then I think that's all going on right now and then from there we'll go down. But we do. Later November two. Meet you next week. What time you want to do it? But, yeah, that's actually the way we set that up. Which is be part of the executive. Let's see, that's a, um.
Into farce.
No.
I'm trying to work it down.
I worked it down at nine o'clock on Tuesday. Ten o'clock on Wednesday.
Nine o'clock on Tuesday, strategic planning?
Yes. Meeting of the executive committee will have with the.
Ten o'clock Wednesday.
Ten o'clock, ten o'clock. But yeah, this is also very important. Mindful strategic planning being actually good. So, next item on the agenda is for training.
Okay. Hold that up. So I don't know if it, Casey provided it right now. As well, um, what we might talk about. It just, it felt really timely to me, given everything in the news these days and the fact that there are a number of censorship challenges happening, um, in schools and libraries and other academic institutions, um, kind of nationwide, to do a little bit of a refresher on, um, some of the library policy regarding, um, censorship and creepery, but then just kind of a snapshot of kind of what's going on nationwide. So, um, this is not news. I mean, there have been censorship challenges, um, for a really long time. The American Library Association has been tracking those for quite a period of years. But, but that, I mean, it goes back into, you know, probably you can say, you know, even, so the World War One era here in Iowa, German material were pulled from libraries. And, um, so we were not, by law, I think not a lot of taxes posted. So this kind of thing, it's, it's not new. So it seems to kind of ebb and flow in the news and, and, and things like that. But just to kind of let you know that this is, um, this is not something brand new. The US. So we here at Stanford Public Library, we get a formal challenge to an item once every few years, I would say. So a formal challenge would be when, um, a library user, um, member of the public, whoever that person is, says, they don't, it's not simply, I'd like to talk to somebody about this because I don't think this is right. I don't approve of this item. And then that's the end of it. So a formal challenge would be when the person, um, fills out our official request for reconsideration of library materials form. So, and that's within the, the board reconsideration policy, right? So there's, there's a policy that covers that. So, um, we get informal complaints, um, that happens maybe a couple of times a year. And a lot of those are to the staff member who's at the service desk. Sometimes they come up new words, um, myself or Lexi. Sometimes it takes the form of a comment card, but it's not a formal complaint. It's, um, so, um, kind of a variety of different ways. But we don't consider it a formal complaint until the, um, the person actually fills out that. And, and that's kind of what triggers our following of that board policy. Request for consideration of, of library materials. So that's kind of where we get with that, so.
Um, could I? Follow up with that? Would it be possible for us to? Yet, I mean, just, we don't need to note any details, but, you know, that there was a, an informal complaint lodged this month.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if you put it like on the, the stat report or something.
Okay.
I mean, I just think it would be helpful for us to know that you guys are running interference for us on, you know, there was an issue this month. I mean, we are the ultimate backstop. And so we are the ones that, if you want to blame us, blame us. You know? But, but again, I think, you know, I think it, it would be good for us to know if this is happening and how often it happens.
Yep, absolutely.
Does handle the formal complaint, where does it go?
So when there's a formal complaint, there's a, um, a staff committee that is business instructor, the director, the youth services and programming supervisor, and the information services supervisor. So, um, so we look at, um, previews of the item. We look at, you know, where it's been placed. We look at the item, um, things like that and make a determination. And then we, um, respond to the complaint, the complaint. So, um, and offer that person the opportunity to say that they would, they disagree with us and they want to pursue it further. And at that point in time, they would come to the board. So, um, we haven't had one come to the board for wide a period of time. So we've had a couple, like we said, a couple of.
Yeah.
We're not, yeah, yeah. So it's, um, it generally stops the, after people, you know, see all that other information, I think, that, that we're sharing with them and explaining our reasoning behind it. So, um, we haven't had any come to the board. But the board is the ultimate backstop on that, like you say. So once it goes to the board and the board makes a decision, that decision is final. There's no additional appeal to the, um, the city council or anything like that.
Higher person, higher attorney, I don't know.
I'm, I'm sure people check that. So put it, put it on by policy.
Okay.
So reasons for challenges, so these slides are from the American Library Association. Like I said, they, they track censorship challenges. And, um, so this just kind of gives you the, the wide variety of things that people complain about. And that's really cyclical as well. And a lot of it is, you know, what's going on in the country? You know, that, that, um, there are just kind of issues that in any given time that people become more aware of, right? So, um, like, um, it was just last year, we had, um, the whole thing about Dr. Seuss. And there was all that, what was the out about that? So there's, um, you know, and, you know, some, some of it is kind of, you know, politically, you want to be someone's kind of far right, someone's kind of far left. I mean, um, we always tell staff that unless there's something on our shelves that offends you, we are probably not doing our job in terms of having a collection with a variety of viewpoints, um, and things like that. So, um, but just kind of just gives you kind of the general idea of, um, things that, um, that people are, you know, often kind of citing in their, um, challenges. And so who initiates those challenges? Uh, I'm not really sure how they determine the difference between parents and patrons. But you can see by and large, it's parents who are unhappy about something that their child, um, found and or brought home from the library. So, um, and that's kind of the key as well, as we get to some specific things that are pledged about the policy in terms of how we manage that. So, but it can become, I mean, can become really across the board. Some states have seen where, um, for a while this was an issue in Colorado. I think where, um, some of the online databases you could, if you, it pulls up full text of the magazine article, right? And, or, and the magazine, so like the actual version, not like a, a typed version transcript of an article, but the full page. And, um, some magazines and the wayback pages have some ads that, um, some parents and some parents groups found objectionable. And there was a concerted effort by an organized group to force libraries to not be able to carry any of that, right? So some libraries actually ended up stopping their subscriptions to some of these services. So sometimes there, there gets to be a lot of organization behind things. And sometimes it's just an individual who, there's just something there that just kind of, you know, they just think that that it shouldn't, either it shouldn't be available, um, at the library or it shouldn't be available in that section of the library. So we would consider it a challenge whether there's a request to remove an item or a request to put it in a special section. Or to move, probably most likely, the one we get would be, this is, this item's in the J collection and it probably should be YA, or probably even more often, this is in the YA collection, but we think it should be in the old collection, right? So that's, and that's just a lot of opinion about what's appropriate at what age. And, um, parents have a lot of variety of opinions on that. And the most way down there, you can't really see it, but one percent is used. So a lot of this is people being offended by things that they're not offended by, right? So, um, the majority of those, um, challenges are in public libraries. If you add public libraries to school libraries, you can see that. I'm not sure why they separate, you know, N S D schools from school libraries because they're still being applied, right? The school libraries have a lot of different missions than the public library. The schools, those libraries are really there to support curriculum and generally are more restrictive than public libraries. That's why sometimes a combination of a, a school library and a public library are not necessarily always happy. I want to say mergers, right? Because of different, different goals and things that, um, we would think nothing of having in a public library shop. Point at the end of school library shop. And so, again, so what gets, um, challenged mostly, books? Grammar and novel, those kinds of things. Um, sometimes there are challenges to programs, um, that are done. The classic example at this point in time, you know, modern, modern, you know, times would be the regulatory times, right? Certainly other types of things as well. Sometimes social media posts, you know, we don't think you should have posted or that. Displays, um, there have been a number of challenges to displays. Mostly those would be something about a controversial subject. Trying to think of a good controversial subject. I mean, the Holocaust comes to mind, right? Holocaust Remembrance Day, is there a display about that? Somebody might find that. Recently in library talk, eight man book speak displays did, um, some small libraries found that members of their community did not like the band books display. They felt that while they weren't necessarily objecting to the items being in the library collection, they didn't like the fact that the, the display was, was kind of pointing those out. But at the same time, you know, they also reported that, um, they had other patrons comment about the fact that, wow, you know, they found something there that they wanted to rate and they hadn't realized it was controversial or whatever, you know, so, um.
The wife of bats, yeah. Right? The wife of bats, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's, we had, uh, we had a V G board in a display along with a few other things at the library and it was challenged at my library. It was told to be removed.
A V G board?
V G board was told to be removed and there was a challenge. And as to add to it, Amy, uh, we, uh, had a quiz going on, on the monitor. It was like, like reading some Hollywood movies or something like that, you know? And I, this I remember distinctly, it was a while back, I had created it. And one of them, it's a university, and one of them had a photo, nothing wrong in it, but that photo was objectionable to a certain, a member. And I won't go who was the member, certain member, and that was challenged. And those, that challenge was brought to my director. And those, that challenge was brought to my director. She made the decision before. So, you know, this basic display reminded me of that, you know, you. It's a ritual thing twice about.
What is the, what is the policy of videos and things like that?
Or like the DVDs?
Yeah.
So it'd be same as anything else, and I think, so well. In terms of content, well, so that's like a couple of slides. So I don't answer it, make sure, make sure you let me know, so. So again, this is just kind of their, their summary of challenges. But I think one thing to note is that so 156 challenges in 2020, that doesn't sound like many. The years prior to that, that number was closer to 350. So I think that COVID had an impact, there were fewer people, you know, going to libraries and things like that, or there were just, you know, maybe fewer people flying, people flying or something like that, so. Or the. The American Library Association relies on libraries to report those challenges and it appears to be that people were stressed out on them, but they didn't, right? So but they do estimate that there is maybe as many as 5,200 challenges every year because the majority, the vast majority go unreported. But they certainly do encourage us to report and when we have a, receive a formal challenge, we certainly. To them, so. So how do we handle challenges? We talked a little bit about this, so there's a board policy on request for reconsideration of library materials. And there is a form that's associated with that, so that asks for the human contact information and. Information, we ask them to provide information to us about the item and and what they're objected to, right? So and to also provide any other information about it, like if they've seen reviews or things like that that they that they want to share with us, we ask them to, you know, put in writing. Are there specific sections of the book that they object to or, you know, what what are the objections? So that we know and aren't assuming what. What what they're, don't think is appropriate, the material. And then it also asks for on what they think should happen, right? So should it be moved to a different section of the library? Should it just be moved to the library shelves? That kind of thing, so. So again, we have that staff committee that we take a look at at that. Make sure that people know what the process is. I think a lot of times people just want to know that there's a process and they want to participate in that process and feel like they've been heard, right? And so we make sure that you know that we have this process when they can expect either from us who's involved in that process and that they absolutely have the right to. As well, so and then again, the board has that in mind. So the material selection policy, and so this. Applies to any materials that we're selecting, so whether it's a book or a DVD or a CD or a book on CD or a graphic mail or whatever that item might be. So I think one of those really key provisions is that. People have a right, I mean, as as a parent, you have the right to monitor and select what your child is reading, but you do not have the right to monitor and select what somebody else's child is reading. And the library does not take that responsibility either. So we do not take the role of a parent in terms of. Deciding what is appropriate for any child or person to be looking at, right? That's up to the parent, that's the parent's responsibility. So. And probably the majority of items that are challenged are, like I said, either juvenile or juvenile. So and generally, it's a parent, right? So we don't take that responsibility of deciding what anybody should read. So that's really. Probably one of the key provisions there. And then there's one more down below that says. We select based on the interest, the information, and the like and for everybody in the community and that we don't exclude material because of the race nationality, sexual orientation, or political or religious views of the writer. And then we don't remove items that are in the collection. That. You know, two, three years later, something comes out about the author. I think, you know, but some of the the books that Al Franken wrote might be a good example of that. You know, so some people are like, well, he's going to take those off the shelf. Now this has been described, but well, no, we're not. I mean, it was, he had a legitimate reason for purchasing that item at the time. And the fact that he now has finally found himself in hot water for whatever reason, that doesn't mean we're going to remove those items from the shelf, so. They would be, you know, following our normal reading policy. Of, you know, it's worn out, it's not being used. So. And that we. Do our best to provide a full range of information and concerning different views and things like that. And then if something is of sound factual authority, we're not going to remove it because there's some partisan or other political. So. So the the policy really says, one one set item is selected. Like as broadly as we can. Did I answer your question, Joe?
Really, I guess my question would be, and I haven't looked real intensely, but. Are there R rated videos?
Yes, there are.
And what keeps seven year old checking out R rated videos?
There are certainly R rated. R rated reading material, right? All those things, so you have, you'd need the same policy.
I just didn't know if there was a policy on videos that, you know, said the younger person could not. Check it out, and you can't, you can't check them out. It used to be you could check out videos.
Yep.
Anybody have any other questions?
Hey, Harry Parker, wasn't Harry Parker is on the banned list. Bible is on the challenge list. You know.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Philomaking word is on the challenge list, I mean, you know. And. Just recently, I saw something where the authors have taken it upon themselves, especially when it's a school board challenge, and the parent, it was found out that the parent had read a particular word that was mentioned. And that was the only time that that word was mentioned in that text. And she had gone in for a challenge to challenge that book from the school libraries. And now it looks like the authors have taken it upon themselves where they take that up and create videos about what that book contains and what is the meaning, for example, of that word and why it should, I mean, they don't say don't challenge it, but that's what I saw.
Trying to provide more context.
Trying to provide context, that that's what I saw recently about something.
So I think in the top 10 list of items for this past year, I think Jason Reynolds has two. I, that list, you know, and so he was an author and he hosted here and. The students were clearly really interested to to meet him and his books are really popular with young people, but there's, you know, some folks don't like some of the language that he uses, which, you know, the kids that he's, you know, writing for, yeah, that's part of their everyday life, you know, so they.
Yes.
I mean, they don't really think anything of it, but but then, you know, parents are being, you know, like. So, but yeah, so.
It's like that book, which is, Son and Rashdi's. Is that, there was a tough time for him.
Oh.
I forget, it was not a piece of, but it was way back.
Twenty years ago.
Yes, long time back, a long, long time back. And we, I, I mean, the difference between a book ban here in the United States and a book ban in India where I worked, where we had to take the book out from the stack, put it in a brown paper bag and put it in the library director's room. I mean, the difference when it comes to book banning, you know.
Couple of years ago. I guess you call it a challenge. I believe he was a minister. I mean, he lived in Orange City. But he. At a event where he burns.
Burns.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because he was classified, he was classified. Those are called.
I think he was.
It wasn't positive for him.
I think he was convicted. He was, yeah. I think I have a feeling I led to. A huge. And pardon. Yep, yep.
We have another way that sometimes censorship occurs and it's hard for us to be aware of is sometimes it's somebody takes the item from the shelf and they just simply put it in a different place in the library. So so somebody looks for it based on the catalog and location it should be, it's really difficult to find, right? Sometimes people check those things out and then just declare them lost and and pay for it, right? And then it's kind of their way of getting it out of the vision also, right? So there are, there are other ways that that sometimes folks do that.
I had someone brag about stealing books from St. Ambrose, but they didn't approve of it. So I went out and bought five more copies, don't need them to say Ambrose.
Like, as I said, Joe, oh, beef out of your journals with pages stormed just because it didn't die of odor. Isn't that?
Yeah, and that, I mean, that that type of censorship is a lot more difficult to trap, right? So, so, I mean, hopefully by having a a clear, you know, transparent process that that people are willing to say, you know, and come to us and say, I, and kind of all in their, you know, their 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 opinions on that, which is, you know, I don't think this belongs here and and I want to go through this process as opposed to kind of. They have these strong feelings, so they're not kind of really concerned. So we definitely prefer to get that. Somebody talking to us and and doing that formal challenge.
Thank you. You know, don't, just turn your page, Joe. And the last I know, agenda. The adjournment. Motion to adjourn the meeting. Tom Luke, thank you, Tom, for a second.
I say.
Thank you, Malabika. The motion is second to adjourn the meeting. All those in paper, please sign. Anyone oppose? Thank you everyone for your time.
Bye, Maggie.
Bye.
Bye, Maggie.
Bye.
Bye.